All rise and say the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. This is the November 8, 2011, school committee meeting. This is a work session, meaning that people can come up and give their opinion on subjects as we go through the agenda. And what I would counsel people to do is just come up to the mike and you'll be recognized. If you haven't signed up ahead of time, if I see you at the mike, I will call on you. If you're standing there and I don't seem to see you, wave and I will acknowledge you. So, so, Lorraine, if you could go ahead and do the roll call, please. Linda Avanzato.
Here.
Mel Boyd Benson.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
William Mudge.
Present.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Joe Thompson.
Here.
Richard Welch.
Here.
Julia Held.
Here.
Student representative. Thank you. Lorraine, could you please go over the calendars? November 11, Veterans Day, schools and offices closed. November 14, Policy Subcommittee Meeting, 11:00 a.m., Central Administration Building. November 21, Budget Subcommittee Meeting, 10:00 a.m., Central Administration Building. November 22, School Committee Business Meeting, 7:00 p.m., North Kingstown High School. November 24 and 25, Thanksgiving Recess, Schools and Offices Closed. November 29, Tentatively Scheduled Joint Meeting with Town Council, per the Town Budget Calendar. December 13, School Committee Work Session, 7:00 p.m., North Kingstown High School Cafeteria. Thank you. All right, next we have fun part of our meeting. We have some presentations and recognitions. So, and we also have with us here tonight, we have Senator Dawson Hodgson, who is here to also give out certificates.
It is our pleasure this evening to honor a couple of incredible awards that have come to North Kingstown High School. The first, we're going to call up the physics team, who recently, if you guys could come on up, please, who recently participated for the Yale Physics Olympics. And I'm not exactly sure how many schools participated, roughly 50, about 50, and North Kingstown scored third overall. So that is quite an accomplishment. And that is, that is 50 schools from, from New York and New England, I take it, okay. I'm going to ask for you fellows to introduce yourselves, and if the coaches could talk a little bit about, you know, the kinds of things that you had to do to win this amazing event.
I'm Nathan Santos.
John Dano.
Peter De Silva.
Connor McMillan.
I'm Daniel Gorilak.
And Rick Powell.
There was actually one other member, Mark Sorial, but he and his family moved away, so some people do anything to get out of going to a school committee meeting, so. But, no, Mark was an integral part of the team last year and this year. We've been going to the Yale Physics Olympics for about eight years now, and first year we went, we had no clues to what was going on. Now, these guys, Nate is our captain for next year. He's a junior this year, and so he'll be returning as a captain next year. And we go to Yale University once a year. We compete against these 50 other teams, or 49 other teams, in laboratory activities and, and a Fermi Quiz. Fermi Quiz is this huge order of magnitude quiz that, that, it's a real challenge because they'll ask you, oh, how many hairs are on your head? And you have to make a guess to it, and so it's, it's a bit of a challenge. Yeah, it'd be easy for Mr. Powell, but, yeah. But, you know, I think this year, one of the questions was, how many miles of telephone line or power line was there in the city in the neighborhood? Okay, and it's, you make an order of magnitude guess. Other, other events are laboratory activities. The one we scored, actually, we scored third place on, one of the events was, second place, sorry, second place, was, you were given two meters of duct tape and you had to build a boat that could have, hold as much sand as possible before it sank. And these guys took second place, really close to the first place score. We took first place in, what? Yeah, on the road, which was a, which was an event where they were given, you know, some cities, actually, it was based on the England, the British roadway system, and to minimize the amount of road to get there from one to, to get from one city to another to have the minimum amount of pavement, basically. So, these guys have a career as civil engineers ahead, possibly, so.
Okay.
We want to give our appreciation here. Dr. Thompson. And then, you. Connor. And then, you. If you're not able.
That'll get marks to him if he has them.
Dr. Robert, if you might just pass them to the general. At the State Senate, I just wanted to stand up all of our best wishes. I recall you folks asking for help, asking $11 bills outside of May breakfast to go to this trip, and I'm so glad to see the results. And the reason that I wanted to come support this effort is that math and science skills are the future of this country, and we're counting on you, so, well done.
Thank you.
And just to show you that athletics isn't our only forte here in North Kingstown, we also have a tennis champion, the singles tennis champion of the state of Rhode Island, Hannah Zangari. Congratulations. So Hannah, do you want to say anything about, you know, I'm doing my first sports interview here. How was it, what was the experience like, winning the state championship?
It was a great experience. I had a lot of fun, and I really want to thank the school committee, the booster club, the coaches, and all the students here at NK for supporting me.
Congratulations. We also have the committee, and also from the State Senate. Congratulations, we've been following your success in the paper for years, and look forward to the rest of your career. Congratulations.
Thanks. Go ahead, Mel, you may say something.
Excuse me, Mr. Kim, if I am chewing on your time. But I couldn't help but to say and feel very good about the physics team. You all know that, that is one of the main things that we are criticized in America about, it's about not having the proper training in mathematics and physics. And also, it was a pleasure to see a graduate, a beginner in our school, but not a graduate who's in the Senate, who came to give those awards. So, this is a very special night for that. And for the young lady who won the tennis match, I have been keeping up with it because we have a young lady in the church I attend from Exeter, and I'm sure you're familiar with her. And it's always been, who's going to get on the top, Exeter or North Kingstown? So, congratulations, and even though it is a sport, it requires thinking, commitment, and being able to make the proper judgment. So, I would be remiss if I didn't say something to you and to tell you how proud I am. I've kept up with the tennis and all the sports in the newspaper, so congratulations. I know we're in a hurry, but it's never the wrong time to take time out to talk to a youth and a person who will be a future leader. Thank you.
All right, now we move into the presentation of the high school AP's results by Dr. Tom Kenworthy.
Before Dr. Kenworthy begins, I don't want to steal your thunder, Dr. Kenworthy, but at your places this evening, everyone, I believe you received a letter from the College Board. The timing of this letter was perfect because we already had this presentation in mind, but as you know, because we sent out the information last week, the AP District Honor Roll, this letter basically says they'd like to congratulate our district for being part of the Advanced Placement Program's Second Annual AP District Honor Roll. The AP District Honor Roll nationally recognizes and acknowledges your district's success and efforts to expand AP access, performance, and commitment to increasing student achievement. This year, your district is one of only 367 districts nationwide that were selected in the United States, or, the United States and Canada, actually. We are the only one in the state of Rhode Island. The North Kingstown School District was selected because it has opened AP classroom doors to a significantly broader pool of students, and Dr. Kenworthy's going to talk about the details on that, while maintaining or improving the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher on AP exams. And the score of three is the, is the score for a passing grade after taking an AP course. So, that is a huge achievement, and we have Dr. Kenworthy tonight to talk about the details.
Okay, thank you, good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight and build upon, you know, the successes that we're sharing with the Yale physics team and Hannah's great achievement in tennis this spring. And we had, as Dr. OJ mentioned, already prepared this presentation because about a month ago or so, we, we received the results from last year's, you know, students who, who took AP courses and then took the exams for those courses in the fall of the following year. We get those results from the College Board. So, we knew by looking at those results that, that, you know, they were very good and we were proud of them, and we were planning this presentation. Anyway, as Dr. OJ mentioned, when we did receive notice from the College Board, which I'll, I'll talk more about when I wrap up the presentation. But, so, just briefly, this evening, I prepared some information. I think this slide really kind of demonstrates, you know, what we, we were already taking great pride in. There had been efforts made at North Kingstown High School to steadily increase both, you know, the, the key for an AP program is to increase the enrollment in the program, while at the same time, you know, you want to see an increase in the results of, of students taking the exam, scoring that three or higher, you know, so that you know that the, the program does have the proper rigor and, and students are performing well. So, while we saw kind of steady improvements in that for the last few years, really from the 2009, 2010 school year to last school year, the 2010, 2011 school year, we, we already knew that that was just a tremendous jump, both in, you can see the total number of students taking AP courses, that's the, the first line there. The next line down, number of exams taken, so, you know, last year, of those 219 individual AP students, there were 403 actual exams taken because many of those students will take multiple AP courses. Scores of three or higher, again, went from 119, 119 to 175, so a great increase there. And for an overall percentage of scores of three or higher, from 76.3 to 79.9, so really almost 80 percent of students who took the AP exam scored a three or higher. Again, that three or higher, it's what most colleges will recognize for college credits, so the students are really getting a great advantage there. This next slide also, I think, illustrates how well those results were for North Kingstown High School, whereas if you take that percentage of students scoring three or higher, whether you compare it to the Rhode Island average, which was 66.3, or the US average, which was 60.2, our 79.9 is, you know, a, a good deal higher than that, so a lot to be proud of there. Also, just broke down for you, just to kind of demonstrate, we offer 12 AP courses here at the high school. Again, I know it's something that, that we, we talk about all the time, you know, it's what we consider to be one of the great things that we can offer here at North Kingstown High School, really, being able to take advantage of our size, and, you know, I think it speaks a lot to the population of, of students we have, the community, you know, communities really of both North Kingstown and Jamestown, and what they want for their students, you know, and the great teaching that we have here to be able to offer this, this kind of AP offering. So this slide kind of breaks down the, the percentage, again, of students scoring three or higher that took each of these exams. Just a little explanation, so you'll notice on a couple of things, it says there was just one student tested, you know, calculus is an example there. We only offer AP calculus here, we don't break it down, but the AP exam actually gets broken down into a couple of different parts, and students can choose whether to take, you know, some or, or all of the exam. So you can see that we, we did have one student, you know, in each of those categories who kind of broke out. Same thing with computer science there, and then also when you get down to the physics, they, they kind of break it out a little bit, but we, we, again, would only offer the overall AP physics course, but, so it's 12 courses altogether. I think you can see, you know, we, we were just very proud of the results that we, you know, achieved overall in all of those courses. And lastly, as Dr. OJ mentioned, we did just recently receive notice from the College Board that we made what they call their AP Honor Roll. We are one of only 367 schools this year, the only school in Rhode Island this year, and from what I have been able to gather, just talking with different people around the state, we are the only Rhode Island high school to achieve this honor yet. It is a fairly new award, however, again, we are the only Rhode Island high school to have been placed on the AP Honor Roll. And I just pulled a couple of quotes from the letter that, that Dr. OJ mentioned that we received, you know, that really kind of highlight, you know, why we're, we're especially proud of this achievement. Achieving both of these goals is the ideal scenario for a district's advanced placement program. Again, we want to be increasing both the number of students taking AP courses while at the same time seeing an increase in, in the number of students scoring three or higher. And, and the, the letter that we received just finished up these school districts, North Kingstown being one of them, managed to open the doors of their AP classrooms to many more students while also increasing the percentage of students scoring high enough on their AP exams to stand out in the competitive college admission process and qualify for college credit placement. So, again, we're, we're very proud of this most recent recognition. Okay, so, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Dr. Kenworthy. Mr. Thompson.
Dr. Kenworthy, could you mention something about the scoring, because I was not aware of this, and my wife pointed it out to me. This is especially a treat because these are not like internal teachers at North Kingstown granting these scores. These are, what are they?
They, they pull together AP teachers from all over the country, these, they all, you know, and the AP exams, again, the College Board administers, the, the AP program is the same organization that administers the SAT, which, you know, many more people are familiar with that exam and its processes, but, you know, very similar procedures. So, we, you know, we get told from the College Board when we will give the AP exams, how they will be given, there's all sorts of strict rules around administering those exam, exams. While we do administer them locally, as long, you know, we have to follow, you know, kind of the rules set down by the College Board, they are then sent off and they are scored by the College Board. The College Board does is it pulls together, you know, it's usually in, in June, because we actually happened to have a teacher go, go off to do this last year, which is a great professional development experience. So they'll pull together in June, AP teachers from all around the country in each of, of those areas where the exam is given, and they score the exam there. So the exams are not scored locally.
Right, so the point is that there's no bias, you know, from us. This is really a, a great achievement, accomplishment upon our students.
If I could address Mr. Thompson's point, you'll probably remember a few years ago, two times, North Kingstown High School won the silver medal, the US News &amp; World Report Silver Medal, and, and the reasons for that award had to do with the number of our students, percentage of our students taking AP courses, and that was really the only thing that US News &amp; World Report can compare. They don't know what an honors English class means at North Kingstown High School as opposed to any other high school, but they do know what AP means. So, so that's how, when you have national rankings of high schools, that's really the only factor that they use, is how many students are taking AP courses and how many are doing well on those AP courses. And, and so we fared well with that before and, and on this poll, so.
Mrs. Avanzato.
No question, but a comment. I just want to say congratulations to you, Dr. Kenworthy, and to all of the staff, all of the teachers of these AP courses. I know that they cover an amazing amount of material. It's just, it really is truly a college course.
It is.
My son's in four of them right now. He's pretty busy, so, but we really appreciate all the effort that went into this by the teachers, the staff, by yourself, and, and you also, Dr. OJ, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Welch, and then.
How fortunate our staff is to have such excellent raw materials to work with, from both Jamestown and North Kingstown. I really appreciate the fact that you mentioned that. I suppose it would be interesting to know that it wasn't lopsided, that there were more from Jamestown than North Kingstown, but I won't ask you that right now. Thank you.
Mrs. Benson.
I just want to congratulate you and your faculty, because the most important thing of all is the progression in the scores from one academic year to the other. So, when we read about teacher evaluation and school administrations, you have a complete And I plan to go to one of the meetings of the Board of Regents when they are out, and I will take great pride in standing, presenting this to them. They want to see the progress from year to year. You have it, and this is the most complete evaluation of any school system in the state. And that's how I feel, and you are to be congratulated, because leadership is the key to any organization. So, as an old saying goes, the head can't move without the neck, you're a good head, and the neck goes with you directed.
Thank you.
Mr. Mudge, and then Mrs. Held.
I'd also like to congratulate you, your folks, for doing a great job, and I know my grandchildren in, in college, actually in grad school as well, and they took the AP courses here. And as a grandparent, I, I understand the value of that because they've got a significant amount of college credits. And when you're paying $40,000 a year to go to a college, it adds up, and it's a lot of savings, and kids can take other courses and so forth and so on. So they're ahead of the world, you know, ahead of the rest of the people as they move along, you know, through society. But also, I think it not only sheds light on, on what's happening at the high school and the 12 AP courses you're providing, but it also says that you're getting a good baseline here in the school system, in the elementary and the middle schools, and it's, you know, culminating, going up through, through the high school, which is indicative of the overall educational process. So, you know, I'm proud of that, the administration, the teachers, and the students as well. So, keep it up.
Thank you.
Mrs. Held.
Yes, congratulations. I think the pass rates overall of these 12 courses are, are really impressive. As a parent of a child who's in a couple of the science ones, though, I have a question. It looks as though the physics B, environmental science, and biology pass rates are sort of significantly lower than the pass rates for a lot of the other classes, with except from Spanish. But is that, given that the science kneecaps, is that part of the discussion in terms of the science curriculum here at the high school?
Sure. Sorry.
Oh, that was it.
Okay, yeah, no, absolutely, you know, I, I would say, you know, the first thing there that would come to my mind when I look at that is that the, the rigor of those courses is also, you know, just at a tremendous level, so I, I think, you know, it doesn't surprise me necessarily to see that the, the, the pass rate of three or higher is a little lower for them.
That standard, is that true in other schools, too? That's something I'd like to know.
You know, I don't, I don't want to say without having, you know, looking at the, the information in front of me. It, it would be my guess that, that that would be the case, just again, because, I mean, and you can only imagine the rigor involved in an AP physics course and then the exam, and, you know, hopefully, again, we have some great students in the pipeline for our AP physics program that you saw here. But, yeah, I, I think, you know, there's no mistake, and we don't certainly shy away from any of it, that our, our science curriculum right now is the one area that we're really trying to focus on to, you know, to both, you know, bring up the rigor overall and, and see an increase in those scores, whether it's in the kneecap or on, on the AP science courses as well. So, it's definitely something that we're focused on.
Good, well, congratulations, this is really terrific.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
We keep hearing that the Science Olympiad, that the kids come through and get a really good background at middle school level, both middle schools, award-winning, et cetera, and then we don't have it here at the high school. So I'm just tossing that out into the air. I don't know how to make it happen, but it just seems like something that, that this committee hopefully would be in favor of and help to support, and I certainly would, and I don't know about anybody else, but that would be a, a fine addition to the, to the whole program.
I, I agree, it's definitely something that we're looking to get going. Again, I don't know, you know, the whole history on it, but we haven't had it here at least for a number of years, so like, like anything, that's a little bit new to the, the people here, you know, we're, we're trying to, to get it going, but we want to make sure that we have the support, you know, in, in place to support it once it gets going. So, I have been, you know, talking with parents, you know, since, especially since last spring, where our middle schools had great success in that Science Olympiad, and really trying to build upon that. So my, my hope is that we will see something in place here very soon. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Kenworthy, thank you for making this presentation. I know from personal experience of many years ago, having taken the AP history exam, that it is a very rigorous exam, so thank you for all the offerings that we give to the students, and, and I encourage them and the teachers to keep, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, we are finished with our presentations, and we have correspondents. Does anyone have correspondence that they would like to share? Mr. Mudge.
I've already provided correspondence I received, actually, this afternoon from another taxpayers' group, and basically, not to irritate anybody, but it's, it's, and which I've, again, submitted to Lorraine, about the letter that the town sent to Jamestown for $262,000 of, of revenue for, for the debt service for this year. What he said in that is basically that Jamestown never responded to the town on that, and asked, what does that mean in terms of the contract and so forth and so on? So, it's an issue we needed to, I think, bring up again, and is it an open item in terms of, you know, what the rates are and so forth and so on? And until we get a letter from Jamestown, you know, answering the town manager's request, I think it's still an open issue. Thank you.
Mrs. Avanzato.
Yes, just a couple of quick things, just an acknowledgement. We all have the current wave, the North Kingstown High School newspaper at our places, and I just wanted to acknowledge the journalism class and Mrs. Martin Kensworthy for taking some journalism students to New York yesterday, to Columbia University for a seminar, where high school students from all over the country participated in, attending some seminars and classes on journalism, and I wanted to thank her for that, on her weekend, for doing that with the students, and I think they got a lot of And I think they got a lot out of it. So I just wanted to acknowledge and thank her for that. And I also wanted to just mention that Mr. Cerisi wanted to pass along his regrets that he couldn't be here and he has the flu. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Mrs. Benson?
Mr. Mudge, you happened to mention Jamestown. And we did receive correspondence from Jamestown informing us of their future plans. And I would like to thank Jamestown for giving us the amount of time. The letter is dated October 25th. And it's really illuminating a long, long time of relationships that existed between Jamestown and North Kingston. I can remember in '74, when North Kingston had one of the greatest football teams. And my son, my late son, was a part of it. And there was a team called the D'Amico O'Neill and Graves. They were called the Rough Riders on North Kingston's football team. And Mr. O'Neill was a Jamestown student. And his mother worked very hard, along with the rest of us.
Jimmy.
To support the, and the people of Jamestown. And just for a little bit of recognition, I don't think you can go forward unless you know the history of anything. It was that group during those years that installed the first lighting system on the football field. So even though it's been a lot of back and forth about Jamestown, I'd like to tell you that it's sadly missed because there's been a relationship governmental and school-wise between North Kingston since 66.
This was after the bridge, a year after the bridge, yeah.
Yeah. I think we even shared the same senators and in some districts, the same representatives. So.
We weren't, but we're all, we're part of Newport County.
Yes.
Yeah, but you had some who chose to come here.
We had, though, there was.
It was open door.
Really?
Yes. Because Mr. Perry.
Hernandez, wasn't he one?
Uh.
From Jamestown? Senator Hernandez.
All right. So Mrs. Benson, is there anything else you'd like to report on your correspondence?
This correspondence relates to Jamestown. And thank you very much for giving me the opportunity.
Mr. Thompson?
Well, I'm looking at the same correspondence, and I think the letter J up there is pretty cool. I wish we had something that came even close. That's, that's good. And again, it also says, we're looking forward to continue the excellent working relationship. And I agree with that. Looking forward to that myself. I think one of the reasons why you like us and why we like you is because all the things that have been mentioned so far at the table here, the athletics that we're all concerned with, the AP classes that we've just heard about, the kneecap scores. And as Bill points out, we're facing up to a very interesting tax season which is coming upon us. And as everyone knows, last year, from fiscal 11 to fiscal 12, the North Kingston property taxes went up 2.79%. And out of that 2.79% burden that was placed on the homeowners of North Kingston, the North Kingston schools were actually level funded from fiscal 11 to 12. And for fiscal 13, we're looking at a, something like a $2 million deficit. And hopefully, we'll get some relief from the, the things that are going on in Smith Hill. But even if we get some relief, we're still, and even if we were to get the full funding up to the cap, we're still looking at a deficit. And so I'm hoping that we can perhaps convince Jamestown to somehow come forward with, with some help to us to alleviate the problems. Because once we start looking at what we're going to have to cut, some of these fine programs that we've been talking about tonight, that are so excellent, will be seriously endangered. And so that's going to be one of my suggestions. I've made it before. I'm making it again tonight, that we've already said, yes, we know what the, the contract says, but this would be an additional amount of money, maybe a one-time deal from Jamestown to help us over this hump that we're facing for fiscal 13.
Any other correspondence?
I also received correspondence from North Theater. There's going to be a play, which if you look behind you, you can see that it's starting to develop here on the stage, November 18 through 20. And it's called A Piece of My Heart: Six Women Relive Their Memories of Serving in Vietnam. And it sounds very interesting. Also, on the 20th of November, which is a Sunday, at 2 o'clock in the Beechwood, there's going to be a fundraiser and bring some cans of food for the North Kingston Food Bank. And there will be some sparkling entertainment provided by the Ten-Rod Ramblers. And finally, I wanted to get my pitch in about the Current Wave because my two daughters were both editors of the Current Wave when they came through the high school. And they both submitted newspapers to the, to the Providence Journal, and they received the high awards and honors for the newspapers in the years that they were the editors. And I would strongly suggest that the editor of the, that submit this particular paper, because it's just about, every page has got some great articles on it. And as the kids say, LOL on the humor pieces. Thank you.
Dr. Ojai?
I'd just like to piggyback on Mr. Thompson's comments on Jamestown. I appreciate the letter from Dr. Lucon that was sent to us. And I would like to comment back to Mr. Thompson that I agree with you about all the issues that we have with our budget. And I cannot imagine what those issues would be like if Jamestown were not a part of this district. So I think we need to be very thankful about that point. Thank you.
Well, I also received correspondence from Louise Denette. And she was letting us know that Jessica Malillo had applied for a grant through the Rhode Island State Council for the Arts, which awarded Quinneset, her Susan M. Hensler Quinneset Elementary School $275 through the Big Yellow School Bus Grant to help pay for buses to the 50, so that students can attend a tour of the RISD museum in the John Brown House Museum in Providence. That'll take place in April, so this is well ahead of time. But congratulations to them.
Mrs. Benson, and then Mrs. Avanzato.
I'm just going to speak about the correspondence from Mrs. Denette. And also, there was a TV presentation also highlighting Quinneset Elementary School. And I would like to ask the superintendent, and would he direct the secretary of the school committee to send a letter to the faculty and the teachers congratulating them on their latest achievements?
I would be.
I think it's better than getting praise from the people who you are working for and who represent the town. And I know we all are very proud of Quinneset. And they've always done an excellent job.
Thank you. Mrs. Avanzato?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to, it's funny, I was just about to make the same kind of comment about Quinneset. They did the turkey trot. And they do a lot of great things over there. You just get a lot of emails from them and they, and they always make the school committee a part of it. They always issue the information to us and the invitations to us. So I wanted to mention that as well.
Mr. Welch?
Mr. Ojai, Dr. Ojai?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't there something coming up on Channel 10 on the 10th?
Yes. I'd be happy to send a letter to Quinneset. And I wanted to remind people that coming up, I believe it's going to be this Thursday night, a week, not a week from Thursday.
No, 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 the 10th, which is this week.
Is it this week? Yeah, I'm gonna have to double check on that. And I'll check on it. And tomorrow morning, we'll send something out on the, on the listserv, just reminding people to watch, turn to 10, because that presentation that was made to Amy Clark will be featured on Channel 10 News.
I have one other thing.
Yes, Mr. Welch?
I haven't received any correspondence on it, but I have to say that I think the statute of limitations has run out on the discussion of the Jamestown contract. And I don't think it needs to come up anymore until the next contract comes up in November.
All right. Let's move on to citizens' comments.
Take exception to that.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to citizens' comments.
Try to shut us down every time.
And Lorraine, do we have any citizens' comments?
No sign up.
Okay. I don't have any sign ups, but this is a work session meeting. So if there's anyone who would like to speak during a particular item, as I said before, just come to my, Mr. Marble, go ahead.
I'm Dave Marble from Eight Kristen Lane. I'm also president of the Booster Club here at the high school. This has been the best school committee meeting I've ever been to. I'm a tennis player and a physics major, so this has been, this has been great. I'm also teaching a fifth grade math boost class at Quinneset, which is a real blast. So, you know, this has been, this has been great. I would have gone when we were going to talk about the advertising contract for the athletic program. But I actually decided to come up now. And the reason is that I, I think it's a far more strategic discussion. After going to the presentation at the combined town council meeting that Dr. Ojai presented the budget at, frightening the heck out of everybody. We had a discussion about, and I've been thinking about this for a long time. When I stepped up as, as president of the Booster Club, I always feel like we're putting fingers in the dyke, trying to move money around here and trying to beg for money and that kind of thing. And I think that, that there really needs to be a far more strategic discussion about public-private hybrid funding of extracurricular activities. And I, and it gets, it's a pretty broad topic because it, it says, you know, you have to talk about who we want to be and look like and feel like with, you know, signs around. And do we want, you know, everything? So I went down to the URI basketball game and the traveling calls were sponsored by TF Green Airport. You know, so you can go pretty far in these kinds of things. And by the way, it can be very helpful, valuable, and, and help us get over the hump here. But I think, again, it needs to be a pretty deep and sort of broad discussion. And being president of Booster Club for athletics, my, my son here at NK is heavily into drama and all of the other things that are going out at the school. He's into the plays and all that kind of stuff. And so I don't want to ignore them either. You've got music programs and, you know, we've got major music corporations like Sony and places like that. And so I don't want to, I don't want to ignore those kinds of things in favor of Adidas because they can sponsor uniforms, right? So, and, and there are lots of different ways to look at and do these kinds of things. And you could go out and get a sign here or a sign there. Or you could work in a far more strategic way with a, maybe it's a not, through the nonprofit corporation that is the Booster Club, or maybe it's some other company that actually acts as your, as a marketing arm and, and it gets funneled through in a very strategic way so that you're very cognizant of how this all works. Because I know that, that doing this kind of thing is not everybody's job. They all have, you know, full-time jobs to do these things. And I just, I just don't think we should potshot this. Thanks.
A comment, please?
You know, we're, we have this on our agenda to talk about a little bit later. So what I would say is, David, are you going to stick around for our later discussion? Okay. Why don't we then have, if we have questions and that sort of thing, that we, we will implore you to come up again and talk some more. But I want to say, let's move on, since this is our citizens' comment, and then we can have more questions and that sort of thing later along this line and with the RFP that we have as part of the agenda.
I would just ask Madam Chair if we could move the item up so that Mr. Marble doesn't end up spending the entire.
I'd second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Maybe not immediately, but after.
Yeah, we can go through, we can definitely move it up right after our consent agenda. Okay. So that brings us to any other citizens' comments? All right. Superintendent's report.
The first thing I have for the superintendent's report, and this was the request of Mr. Cerisi, who's not here tonight, but hopefully he may be watching and hearing this information. He asked about our, our consolidated resource plan. And this is a grant that is federally, federal money that comes to all the schools and all the school districts in Rhode Island and covers a number of different areas. And the two areas that I have been overseeing as assistant superintendent are Title II, which is professional development for our district, and Title III, which is anything related to ESL. Title II funds for this year come to roughly $173,000. And that money is pretty much used, in some cases for, in all cases, for anything related to professional development. So in some cases, we're looking at substitute teachers that cover for teachers while they attend professional development. It could be for trainers around, you know, our information management system or for just about anything that we do. Even percentages of different teachers come from some of this grant. This covers the salaries of different people and benefits. This particular grant also includes a small percentage on a per pupil item for the private schools in North Kingston. And the public school system in a particular town is charged with kind of overseeing. That basically means you make a couple of phone calls to the private schools and talk to them about how they would like to spend their share of this particular money. But it is not North Kingston taxpayers paying for private school items. And as you can see, in our district, this covers everything from substitute teachers going to professional development sessions, to trainings on phonics, to technology-related items like NWEA and reading A to Z programs. It helps us pay for the training involved with the GemsNet program that we love so much. And that's pretty much the gist of it. For Title III, that's, that's a relatively small number. In fact, until recently, we were part of a consortium of many districts with this because the number was so low. Now that we're over $10,000 for this number, we oversee it ourselves. And this covers a few items related to professional development for ESL teachers and for mainstream teachers about ESL issues. It also helps to pay for some technology and equipment related to ESL resources. I have Donna Thompson here this evening. Donna, would you mind coming up to the microphone and just talking a little bit about our Title I program? And Donna has, has been the person who has been overseeing this for years and is kind of giving that baton over to Barbara Sweeney.
Hi. Those of you that don't know me, I am Donna Thompson, and I've been here for about 14 years doing this. So hopefully, I can provide enough information to answer your questions. I know you all have a handout with the Title I budget here. And what you also hopefully have is a color-coded copy. Is that true?
It's, it's in the packet, yes.
Okay. So you, you have living color. Title I money is federal money that is given to districts to add supplemental services over and above, in addition to, over, over what the normal school day would deliver. In North Kingston, we have one Title I school. It's Quinneset Elementary School. We have that because that school has approximately 52% poverty, which is determined by free and reduced lunch. What that really says is, we take those extra services to every student in Quinneset that needs them, that needs academic services. It's not in any way separative. The whole school gets it. The whole school gets it. The color-coded budget that I provided here, you'll see things in shades of blue, pink, and a couple of other colors. School-level allocations at Quinneset Elementary School are in light blue as are supplemental services for Quinneset. Those services would be.
We didn't get the color.
Well, let me try and do it another way, then.
That's okay.
The first two services, first two listings here, school-level instructional and school-level supplemental, are services that all go to Quinn. They total over $342,000. Title I this year was allocated originally for $473,000. The district studiously set aside money over last year, the 2010-11 school year, to be sure we had extra money in the bank, so to speak, to have adequate funds to service the growing needs at Quinneset and the growing numbers. This year, we actually had $620,000 rounded. As you can well tell, that's more than the lion's share of this allocation. The preschool money, which is early childhood, is required by Title I and delivers a preschool Title I kindergarten or pre-K for 17, well, actually up to 19 or 20 kids. And those are children who would not have otherwise had services, need to be prepared to come into kindergarten, and Title I is allocating money for us to do just that. That comes to about $135,000. Administrative costs are about $116,000. That allows the district to oversee all aspects of Title I, to deliver all of the mandated reporting and requirements. We are also charged with maintaining compliance and all aspects of No Child Left Behind. And in a nutshell, that's what you get for your money. This is federal money. It is for children and families. It is for over and above support, over and above what you and all the rest of us provide in the district. And basically, the government is saying, you've gotta do these things. You have to provide parent involvement, homeless services, private school, export services. You have to provide before and after-school and summer services, and to do that, we're giving you this money to at least help you meet that requirement. I can see hands.
Dr. Rogé, did you wanna say anything more, or should we take questions?
Well, how about if we ask Rachel Santa to come on up and talk about the other piece of the CRP before, and then we'll take all questions from everybody. Rachel, of course, oversees the IDEA and preschool portions of the CRP.
Good evening. You'll notice that, you should have a handout also regarding the IDA CRP. And you'll notice that our allotment this year was approximately $950,000. The lion's share of the money was spent on positions. You have to understand that under IDEA funds, there's kind of two sections. The biggest section says that we can only pay for services or consider to be excess costs for the cost to service students with special needs. And then a piece of that money, 15%, we're required to spend on, actually, it seems kind of intuitive, but we're required to spend on regular education in doing response intervention-type services to prevent students from being identified, being with special needs, being able to provide extra reading services or math services without having to identify them. So that's the, the majority of the grant. There's a variety of different positions. I'm very careful to align this grant so that every position in here, if it is considered to be IDEA, is 100% working with students with special needs so that we don't enter trouble with auditors. I understand in the state that that's become an issue. It's not an issue for this district because we've been very careful about maintaining those positions. You will see positions under early intervening services. You may see, you might find one kind of strange where it says behavior specialist .3, early intervening services, and then right below it, it says behavior specialist .67 IDEA. That's our district behavior specialist. Prior to coming to the district, we were spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars and added district consultation for behavior, and it seemed to be more cost-effective and more conducive to the district to have a position that was ours. And the way I was able to fund that was to do one-third through early intervening, so any of those regular ed students that are having difficulties, being able to have someone go in and determine behavior plans or to look at behavior data, and then to also to help maintain the other two-thirds of that position is working for kids with special needs. So that position may look a little funny because of the way it's broken out, but that was the way to fund and get that full-time position in our district, which I can directly attribute to assisting with our alternative learning programs, which directly attributes to our ability to keep kids out of district, very costly out of district placements, as I've talked to you about before. Pretty much, the positions are, I think, are pretty straightforward. That was the one I thought that you might have questions. And then it's broken into, in the benefits that are attached to those positions. Then there are another section that we work with, our purchase professional and technical services. Right now, we provide an auditory support stipend. We have quite a few students in our districts with hearing difficulties, and there's a lot of equipment that goes with that. So I do fund an extra stipend to a, a speech-language pathologist that helps us with inventorying the equipment, making sure the equipment is in good, good condition, and then it gets to the right students when they need it at the beginning of the school year, is collected at the end of the school year, and again, is reissued for extended school year if the students are attending. Conference registrations, that's, one of the conferences I usually attend is the legal conference, and if you can remember the service animal policy that the school committee, that came directly from that particular conference. It's, I believe it's hugely beneficial, not to myself, but also to the entire district, coming back with what we know is going on in our nation, mini horses and dogs. Other purchase services are things like special ed local advisory committee. I always set aside money so that we can do publications for them, things like their brochures, and also anything that we might need for child outreach. Both those programs are federally mandated, and I make sure I have some money set aside for them. I also set aside money for transportation, for transition activities. These are students with special needs and possibly also on alternate assessment who need to do activities within our community in order to collect their data on their alternate assessment. So it helps to pay for those transportation costs using our own bus system, but I reimburse that cost, the excess cost. Supplies and materials, that you might find that odd, so I gave you a little bit longer of an explanation because there's a zero bounds there, again, because I have to spend 15%. It becomes a really big seesaw where if I put more into special ed, then I have to make sure I have more into early intervening services. So that's a placeholder because I expect that we have carryover funds, and I wanted to make sure I remembered to, to offset that and to make sure that I have a placeholder to put additional funds into early intervening services. So that's why that's there. Pretty much, I think everything else is fairly straightforward. Related services and providers, those are our speech PTs, OTs, school psychologists, any supplies that they need in order to support the services they provide, as well as our special education or excess costs for supplies and materials. You have to be very careful, under IDEA, I cannot pay for any supplies that every student's receiving, so if every student receives paper and pencils, I cannot provide that. It's only specialized equipment for students with special needs under this particular part of the grant. And then we also pay for things like, a little bit of money for classroom modifications or hearing clouds or some other pieces of equipment that may need to be brought into classrooms. So that's, in a nutshell, predominantly, it really is positions. We're paying for our teachers and their benefits that go with that.
The only other piece of, thank you, Rachel.
Yeah.
The only other piece of the CRP that we haven't covered yet is the Race of the Top Fund, which is also overseen from the Assistant Superintendent's Office, and that's roughly about $180,000. And we've talked a lot about those items. That's the evaluation substitutes that come in and help us do our evaluations. That is the work that is being done to create the common core curriculum, and it also covers the induction coaches. We had a presentation from them recently. So all of those services are taken care of through the Race of the Top Grant. And at this point, we'll, if you have any questions for anyone on any piece of this, we'd be happy to take them.
All right, why don't we just go ahead and go right down the table, since I know that just about everybody has questions? So, Mrs. Alvin Zado.
Okay, I just wanna say thank you for the presentation, and the materials in here are very complete. I really appreciate having it all right here broken down. It's really clear. I have to ask, and I'm sorry to do this, but I have to ask that we put this topic on the next agenda. Mr. Cerisi apologized for being, you know, unable to be here because he's not feeling well, but I know he has a couple of questions, so, I mean, it doesn't need to be a full discussion, but if it could be on the agenda so that if he has his questions, he could ask them at the next meeting.
I can cover those items next time with him.
Yeah, and I realize that Mrs. Thompson and, and Rachel may not be able to be at the next meeting, but the materials will be, so, thank you. I don't really have any specific questions. Thanks.
Mr. Watz.
Question on No Child Left Behind.
Sure.
Where is that? It seemed like it was going away. Is it still going away? Is it in limbo? What's happening?
It's, it's a two-year grant, so it covers us for FY11 and FY12. And we haven't gotten any word in terms of funding after that.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation. I, I will, the only thing I'll say is that normally if we have a committee member who's not here, we don't always put things on the agenda again. Would there be any way that Mr. Cerisi could come in, talk to Dr. Rogé on his own to, to get his questions answered, and in that way?
Actually, I would ask that it be on the agenda again. I'd like to hear what he has to ask as well personally, and I mean, you know, it could be, it could be done under even, even under budget.
Whole business.
All right, Mrs. Benson.
First, I wanna congratulate you, Rachel, in giving such an in-depth report. And for the last month, I have been keeping track of this with the Senate, and I hope you will bear with me for but calling a name, but to the members, I think we should be very diligent in working with our representatives, because there's a senator, Senator from North Carolina, his name is Miller. I was almost like any gentleman that was watching the Patriot game, you know, how you holler out and scream and say, this is not right. There is a move to do away with the whole package of No Child Left Behind. And from the way that the committee stacks up, they have the votes. And you mentioned something there that I really was really screaming about. And when they recessed, I haven't been able to get the consequent, consequences of the last thing, but when they recessed, they was discussing having all speech therapy done in the home, not off of the, taken away from the home and done in the school. And I know that you're doing a good job. You have children who, in the special education department, that once they get home from school, the speech therapist visiting, and that was something I knew about, so that's when I was hollering, just like any of you gentlemen, our football fans, along with myself, at the game Sunday. So I would caution all of us to be very diligent and be very up on these things. And things are, for our senator, we have two. One is on that committee. And let them know how we appreciate that, because this is gonna be reduced to a pile of paper in a certain extent, because let's not drink tea, that's all I can say, without getting political. And that is a fair warning, and you've done a great job in doing this. I spent the last 14 years in my career in the school department, working with Title I, Title II, which comes out of Title I, and Title III. And there were 37 items on the agenda related to Title I, and they cut them down to 17. So in order for us to keep these programs, we're gonna have to stay up on it, because I don't know how we can run a school system without that help. Now, the next question, and I don't know if I'm permitted to ask you this now or not, but where we have a consolidation of schools, and I'm only taking in Fishing Cove, which is in my community, is there some way that we can re-identify and take the income of the families of those children that attend that school? And I'm almost ready to say, we would have at least, if it's only one and we came over five, that we would have another avenue that we would be able to get those things, get the benefit from Title I. Yes?
I think what you're, I think what you're asking, and let me see if I have it right, is whether or not we could take a look at the students again to see if, what the percentage of free reduced lunches and whether or not they qualify for Title, Title I, Title II services?
That's it, exactly.
I think it has been done unless you don't, it's not a Title I school.
Okay, what?
Right. Thanks, Rachel. I'm over here.
Okay, I'll, I'll pinpoint this one to you.
Yeah, what, what I wanted to do is answer you.
Okay.
The district, each year, when you, when we present this plan, this consolidated resource plan, in Title I, we do something called a ranking report, and that is done with the data that is provided by the district. We use a number of, of different formulas that the state and federal give us. Bottom line, it identifies the poverty of each school based on the population of that school, the number of kids attending, and Fishing Cove has, I anticipate this may be a question. Last year, when we put the ranking report together based on district stats, 48.13% of the children in Quinneset were free reduced lunch. In Fishing Cove, it was 25%.
Have you redone that since the big unemployment?
We, we, you could only do it once a year. We can only do it once a year, but we looked at it again on Octo, on October 1st enrollment, and it still stays right about the same. You have to remember that in Title I, preschool is not counted. They only count K through 5. So you have a large number of preschoolers over in that school. However, we cannot count them or their free or reduced lunch status. Does that answer your question?
Hardly, but I have another part to it. Due to the larger amount of unemployment in North Kingstown, as of September, I think at one of the meetings, I gave the number of working people who were capable of being in the workforce, and we are past half of the numbers that we had a year ago. So I was only speaking to the urgency of now and the unemployment rate within the town.
It would not change the Title I status of that school at this time, however, any financial changes to the families would certainly make the, the door wide open to them to receive free and reduced lunch. That would be the first step.
Okay.
And that does, can and does happen.
If these new rules come through and you have other things, that will be considered, because I do believe we will be entitled to more money. That's all.
Next March 1st, we will draw the data again, and we will look at it, and when we make application next year, we will fill in the formulas and that will determine it. So maybe, maybe not.
What if unemployment spikes in January and more kids come and wanna be on free lunch? Will we be able to serve them?
Yes.
Okay.
We may not be able to give them academic Title I services, but we'll serve them free and reduced lunch.
Okay, you can. Okay, you can put that part in, but you don't have to wait to October. You have to wait for October for the other part?
Correct.
Okay, so it's two parts?
Always two parts.
Oh, okay. One for the lunches and one for the academic support?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But they will get the lunches.
Okay.
Go right away.
Mr. Thompson?
Okay, just to... The first one is kind of a general question. And this would be, are we spending more on the requirements that are given to us from the Race to the Top than what we're getting from the Race to the Top? And the second one is maybe my mishearing. I wrote down that you're spending $620,280 for 20 students. And maybe I got that wrong because I did the division, and it came out to about $30,000 a student. So, please correct me on that one.
No, that means...
That is incorrect.
Okay.
Okay. The number of students that are being serviced in Quineset, it's just about 375 students. All children attending that school and their families receive academic and supplemental support. And in addition to that, it would be the NK Connect program, which is the preschool Title I program, and that's another 17 to 20 kids, depending on enrollment.
To answer your question about the Race to the Top, Mr. Thompson, we are not spending any more money on these services than is currently being given to us from Race to the Top. The only catch to that, if you will, is part of the Race to the Top, obviously, is a transfer to the Common Core curriculum. Ultimately, you know, North Kingstown will be doing some work in professional development that will probably be outside of the scope of the Race to the Top grant and making sure that our teachers are, you know, up to date and, you know, that curriculum is made for North Kingstown. There's a lot of money that comes to North Kingstown through the Race to the Top grant to do that work, but I would anticipate even more money being spent. Now, that's not to say that would be very different from any other year, when we would normally do curriculum work anyway to update our curriculum, you know, one way or another. We have a cycle, and we would update the English curriculum, and we would update the math curriculum. So, that would kind of fit right into the funds we already spent. But technically speaking, the Common Core curriculum is a Race to the Top initiative. Thank you.
Mr. Mudge?
Donald? Excuse me. Yeah. Just to clarify something here. You said about 43% of the students at Fishing Cove, excuse me, Quid, is getting free and reduced lunches?
That was true as of last March 1st. We just ran the numbers again, and it's 52%.
52%? Now, that's... In terms of, how do you calculate this? Is that done on a basis of census data or how for Title I funding? Is census data applied a part of that?
The allocation that the district receives.
Yeah.
Each district receives an allocation based on its proportionate share of poverty.
But how's that determined? Is that, you know, through the Census Bureau? Or, you know, how do we determine that?
I believe it's driven through the data department here, goes to the state, and goes to the federal government. So, I don't... It's not tied directly to the census on a regular basis because that's only done every 10 years.
Maybe I should give you a call because I was kind of wondering, who does that? And when does it change? And how often does it change? And what is the algorithm? I mean, if somebody in the department is trying to, you know, figure out who should be qualified or not, there must be some statistic. And somebody must be reporting it back to be qualified, have an individual to receive a free and reduced lunch.
Right. That is collected through our data department in tech support. And part of the coding in Aspen now identifies our students in a multiplicity of ways. One of the ways is whether or not they receive free or reduced lunch, whether or not they are homeless, whether or not they have moved, how many addresses they've had, single parent home.
Do the parents apply for that? Or, you know, what's the process?
They can apply for that, yes.
So, all the parents of 380 kids over there, do they apply for that?
Good question. No.
Okay.
Across the district, everybody applies for it. At the beginning of the school year, a federal form goes out to every student in the town of North Kingstown for the parents to fill out if they would want to apply for free or reduced lunch. That's across the district.
Okay.
In Quineset, because we have done the work at the district level for the past four years now, all children that attend that school, regardless of whether or not they receive free or reduced lunch, receive services. And that is because it is the highest percentage of poverty in the district. And you put Davisville, L., and Quineset together, and what you got was just about 52...
See, service, this is not free and reduced lunches anymore. This is the overall service to the building.
That's correct.
Educational as well.
The building is identified for service by its overall poverty.
Right.
Which is, let's say, 52%.
But everybody gets it in the school.
Then, because we are a school-wide school, in that school, every child has access to all those services.
But conversely, now, we have 25% in Fishing Cove.
Mm-hmm.
What do they qualify for?
Nothing. Not Title I services.
Yeah. What do they need to get Title I services at? What percentage?
Well, the formula is...
I thought you said it was like 25% in...
Yeah. This past year, it was 25.71%.
And so, then, so, okay, a little bit of that. But so, the idea that I'm trying to get at is, at what point would they be eligible for the Title I services?
To be a Title I school?
And, yeah, what dictates that? I guess I'm trying to figure out.
They could be eligible for services, but the district could determine that they are going to put all of their dollars in the highest need school. And that's what this district has done traditionally.
Okay, so we could...
Over the past 14 years.
We could share, for example, money. So, we're getting the free reduced money for some 600 kids, I guess, right? Is that what our number is?
At Quineset?
No, no, the whole district.
Oh.
From the state standpoint or the federal standpoint. But what we do is then, you know, we dedicate that money for one school. And in this case, we wouldn't put any money towards Fishing Cove.
Correct.
But we could if we wanted to, is what you're saying.
The district could determine the feasibility and the viability of it. They would have to work with the State Department of Ed to determine whether or not it was fiscally sound.
Okay.
Okay. Because you have such a high need in one location.
Right.
You have, you know, the next highest need at Fishing Cove. But there's no way you can take the small amount of money, the 400 and some thousand. You have to remember that the number that you see here on your budget of 620,000 is with a planned $150,000 carryover from the year before. That will not happen again. You will have less than $500,000.
But suppose now Fishing Cove...
Let's wrap up our questions here, folks. It is...
Please. I have a lot of questions.
I just want to remind everybody, it's 8:30. We are still on presentations and reports, and we haven't gotten to the consent agenda. And we do have other things on here tonight, and we have people who would like to speak on that.
I have several questions that I would like to answer, please.
So, I would ask that you ask one last question, and then we need to move on.
I have several on this, you know, that are on the other subjects too, ma'am. Okay? If we have to stay here much long?
Your questions, please. I'm asking you to ask your question.
I'm asking you to be civil and allow me to finish my questions. Okay? Here we go again, again.
I'm not trying to be dissible, Mr. Mudge.
Yes, you are.
I'm trying to make sure that we get enough time for the rest of the meeting.
I'm trying to make sure I understand.
Please, ask your question because you don't need to argue with me.
$600,000 program.
Just ask your question, please.
Now, with respect to a couple of things. One is, is that what, say, Fishing Cove, 50% of the students over there are 60% qualified for free and reduced lunches. Just saying that. That's what I was trying to get at.
Okay.
Okay. Would both schools get it, then?
The district would have to make a determination with the State Department of Education as to the feasibility and viability of spreading those funds. In other words, you have a small pocket of money, under $500,000. You would dilute the impact of services so that neither location would have a huge gain. And you would only have to then, Mr. Mudge, target certain students as opposed to all of the students receiving services. So, then you're, you know, you're identifying them.
Well, see, if we had the same amount of students at Fishing Cove and Quin... Quid, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me, Fishing Cove and Quineset.
Right.
The same amount. Say, each one had 300 students. Then, we'd have to choose which one got the extra.
No, no, no.
And which one didn't. That's exactly what you're saying. No.
All right. We are asking hypotheticals here.
No, I'm not.
And I'd like to keep it into just what we have.
Okay, so...
So, I'm going to ask if the committee would like to move on. Do I have a motion?
I have several other questions here. Please.
It'll be on the next agenda, I believe. Let's not take all night.
Yes, we do have this on the next agenda, is what the committee has said. So, that's why I'm saying, let's move on. You will still have an opportunity to ask your questions. Keep them very specific. Everyone has had a chance here to ask at least one question, and some of you have asked more than one.
That's really general, to get that one question.
So, I would like to ask if we could move on with the rest of our agenda. So, Dr. Ojai, next time, Mrs. Benson, you've asked a couple of questions, and I'd say, next time, let's, you know, make sure that we are succinct in our questions. We write them down, and between now and our next agenda, we will have this again so that we can move on to the other items.
We're going to have a full discussion next time? A full discussion of everything?
We will ask the necessary questions.
And who determines whether they're necessary or not?
...in open meeting, Madam President, that would it be permissible, in order to allay some of Mr. Mudge's concerns, that, and I would suggest, and I would love to go to that meeting with you, Mr. Mudge, because it's a lot of hodgepodge...
Did you have a question, Mrs. Benson? Otherwise, we're moving on.
It's a lot of hodgepodge that you're talking about. And this is very vital to the finances of our school.
And I'm not debating that. I'm merely asking that the committee now move on. Dr. Ojai, you have...
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mudge? What am I not doing correctly?
Point of order. I would like to discuss the IDE portion of the handout now that we're off the Title I. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to say that we will...
Point of order.
...discuss that next time. Thank you. Dr. Ojai, you have another section under your...
The next part of the superintendent's report has to do with a request from Mr. Welch, in which he asks about how we are going about reductions in the athletic director's budget for FY11. I have Mr. Marcello here to talk a little, very briefly, I might add, about how that will happen this year. Mr. Marcello?
I guess it was back in the spring where our former superintendent, Dr. Thornton, called me into his office and said, "We need to reduce the budget for athletics by about $30,000. So, how do we propose going about this?" And he asked me, "What are the most expensive sports that serve the least number of students?" And that happened to be ice hockey and gymnastics. So, the proposal was to cut those two sports, thereby saving the $30,000. I believe it was presented to the school committee at that time, but the school committee rejected that proposal and requested an across-the-board cut. So, looking back at my budget, there are three basic areas for me, one being equipment for the teams, which we're not, again, ordering the Cadillac or the Mercedes, but we're kind of sticking around with the Chevys and the Fords. And we're buying just the basic equipment that's needed for each and every team. Uniforms, for example, as you may recall, with the football team, we split the cost down the middle 50/50. The athletic department provided 50% of the funding. The fundraising activity accounts for that particular team provided the other 50%. And that's how we're buying all the uniforms for this year and last year. It's also happening at Davisville Middle School. The next big area is for officials. We can't, we cannot cut the cost for the officials, the referees, basketball officials and so on, who officiated these games. You have to have two basketball officials. You have to have two umpires, et cetera. So, the last area is transportation. My recommendation would be that we somehow come up with a form, if you will, to allow parents, possibly for the spring sports, to transport these students who are participating in athletics to away events. I'm sure Ms. Carroll would have something to offer on that as far as the legality and so on. But keep in mind that I believe precedent has been set for several years here in that respect of transportation. Because we have swimming at an off-site area, that would be St. George's in Middletown. The hockey team travels to Boss Arena at URI. The baseball team travels to Lishio Field. Softball team travels to Ryan Park. And the gymnastics team practices and has their home events at Aim High Academy in East Greenwich. For all those teams, for their home events and their practices, they find their way to those off-site facilities on their own. There is no transportation provided. So, this idea of possibly having parents driving the students to certain events may save a good portion of money of that $30,000 cut. Other than that, and of course, I'm open for suggestions from anyone here on the school committee, as it comes down toward the spring. And I see that I'm not going to make it. And so far, I think with the reduction in the amount of money that we have to spend for rental of ice time at Boss Arena, and the swim team donating $1,000 to the pool rental facility at St. George's, plus my own estimation or speculation on how much we might take in and gate receipts at some of our home events. I still see us coming up short at this point, maybe in the $10,000 to $15,000 range of that $30,000. Unless, when we get to the spring, again, I would have to throw it out to the school committee, saying if we cut these teams, and those teams are yet to be determined, then I could meet that $30,000 reduction.
In my discussions with Mr. Marcello and with our attorney, we discussed the possibility of doing something like this in the spring for nearby away games, places like East Greenwich and Exeter West Greenwich and Narragansett and South Kingstown, where the travel, in some cases for kids, may even be less than if they had to come to the school and wait for the bus and then go by bus. And we could probably save a lot on busing that way. But what we would need to do in the meantime is to make sure that that is legal, which we believe it is, but also to cover ourselves for insurance purposes and make sure that whatever arrangement we have for travel is taken care of for liability. And that's what we're looking into right now. We chose the spring because it takes the whole idea of, you know, winter weather and that sort of thing out of the equation. And it gives us, obviously, a little bit more time to make sure that this plan will work. But that's what we have in store for right now.
All right. This isn't up for a vote. This is just for a report. So, if committee members have questions, Mrs. Benson, Mr. Mudge?
I don't have a question, but when I was going through this, and I noticed the salaries, you mentioned according to NEA contract?
Yes. All those salaries are determined on the formula.
Yes. And the idea that came to my mind was that the teachers have given, and I see some hefty salaries here for courses of these extra activities. And I was going to suggest to you that you go back, or we some kind of way renegotiate that portion of the contract, or see if we can get a little reprieve according to these salaries. salaries, because every single day, something is coming up within our little state that shows that we're not going to have the money. And we cannot give a person and sign him up for a job and then not be able to pay him. So my idea was, and I looked at this very, very closely, indoor track team, over 3,000, some of them 2,000, and when you add all of that up, I can understand what you're saying about your budget. But I was going to ask that maybe the superintendent, yourself, and the negotiation team could get together, even if it wasn't but a 3% reduction in these, because everybody else is giving, and this is given strictly to the contract. When was this negotiated?
Well, I believe this is the first year of the new contract.
Oh, you never had contracts in getting out the salaries.
This is the second year.
Mr. Marcello isn't involved with that.
Second year of the contract. We have another year to go.
That's what I'm talking about, the year that you got left and this year, because there's that big bear called pension. And no matter how we put out the traps, we're going to have to face it, along with the other economic restraints on the taxpayers. So I would suggest, this is just a suggestion, that since you have one more year, and whomever was on the negotiating team for the teachers, Dr. O'Shea, call a meeting and see if we can't get this down. Because I don't resent it, but I hate the fact that we can't give hockey and those other things, because everybody can't be a tennis player like that little girl. And we're trying, according to our motto, educate every child and have activities. So somewhere in this large budget, even with Wickford Middle School, 3,274, 3,274, and if my mind serves me right, these same people have been doing that same job at Wickford Middle School for over five years. I'm just pulling five out of the hat. So we're going to have to ask on every end, so how do you like that suggestion? And then you'd be able, and like you said, Mrs. Carroll, I'm not monopolizing meetings, but I'm just coming up with things, how we can do it. You said she was going to talk about the transportation to and from these games, and I don't think that we can be exonerated or give up our liability, even if parents are carrying them, if we are going as far North Kingstown School. That is a discussion for a later date. But this about the contracts and the stipends, I would very much like to see that take place.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson, for that suggestion. We can throw that to Dr. O'Shea, and he can decide on how to get back to us on that, because that would be more of what he would do.
That's what I suggested, the superintendent.
Yes, thank you very much. And I will remind the committee that the formulas are based on the number of students who are in a sport, and so that's why you'll see one sport being more than another, and they're also based on the number of years that somebody, a teacher or the person has coached a sport. Mr. Thompson.
I was going to just, some of these have already been mentioned, but the equipment that you buy.
Yes.
I've heard in the past, at some meetings, in fact, before I joined the group, that we were having to buy certain types of, I think it was baseballs, that were more expensive because of some reason that's in the Rhode Island Athletic Association, and maybe we could explore that with that group. The jackets that you referred to, they were a high-priced jacket. It was a single bid, single-source bid, and I think we made it very clear, we wanted to have competitive bidding for that kind of equipment. I've already mentioned Jamestown, going to them and saying, please, can you help us out on a one-time deal? You've mentioned on the coaches, we've heard about asking them to take some kind of a decrease, which we need. And I noticed on my copy here, it says that the girls' basketball coach is making $32,374.50, so I think that's a misprint. I'm sure it's a misprint.
I would guess it would be $3,200.
Yeah, yeah. So I just circled it and put, wow, you know, there's your whole savings right there, you know? And then.
PMS does have a great basketball team.
Must be a lot of kids playing on that team.
Yeah, Rick Pitino coaching that team.
And finally, finally, those are the coaches, and then you mentioned the referees, that that can't, anything be done with the referees, and I'm, I don't know, maybe we can do some brainstorming on that. Those fees are set.
By the Rhode Island Institute Scholastic League.
Well, here we go again, same group, you know? I mean, we do have some connections with that group. Maybe we can help you out with that. I don't know. We'll try anything. But this is a desperate time in Rhode Island, in the state, in the nation, and right here in town. And I think everybody has got to be aware that in order to keep up the standards, which we expect and the citizens expect, not only on the athletic, on the academics, which we've seen tonight, but on the athletics as well, then we've got to ask people to help in the shared sacrifice. Thank you.
Mr. Mudge.
The, you know, trying to continually raise money is very difficult, and certainly we have to be cognizant of the pay-for-play issues and those types of things. You know, I'm glad to see this, but I will see it today from the Boosters Club, because I think they've done an outstanding job in North Kingstown for years, years. And my question is, how often can you go back to the well? You know, if they're doing the extra things for the kids and the dinners and the, you know, scholarships and things like that, are we going to ask them to go and raise money now for transportation? I don't think so, myself. You know, we're talking about less than 1% of the budget, okay, for athletics. What's the value of athletics? We're nickel-diming you right now, okay, in terms of, you know, we can save a few bucks here, I understand that, possibly, but you're not going to save $30,000. You're not going to be able to do that. You're going to have to cut, and I don't want you to cut. I'd like to see us fulfill the schedule we had this year, and if we need to take $30,000 out of our surplus fund, then I'll be glad to make that motion.
I understand.
Okay, but I, it's a, you know, we just keep going back to the community for this, 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 and this. So we've got to put a value on our athletics, what, how valuable it is, and that we're willing to pay. And I think they're valuable enough that we can pay what you budgeted for this year. Of course, we want efficiencies, we want to continue to look at efficiencies, we're going to ask you to do that. But at the same time, those little efficiencies aren't going to save you $30,000. You want to cut football, you want to cut hockey, you want to cut whatever, fine, okay? But that's the alternative, basically. So you don't have much of an alternative.
Understood.
Okay, so my complaint, not to you, is that you need $30,000 more, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm willing to give it to you. Thank you.
Mrs. Avinzado.
Just very briefly, thank you for the work that you did in looking for the money. Obviously, every penny's already been kind of scraped out, it sounds like, but I would ask just a quick question, along with answering Mrs. Benson's question. Are the stipends increased yearly? That would be my question to Ned or Phil, whoever's going to look into that issue. Secondly, obviously, we need a legal opinion on it, but I don't see what the problem would be in parents transporting their own children. I mean, I transport my child to a North Kingstown function, say a dance, for example. There's no difference, in my opinion.
It's a liability, I think, transportation, a big one.
I don't think it's any different from myself taking my son to a North Kingstown school dance, and I don't see the school's liability in that instance. So that would need to be answered by our attorney, but I think it's a good idea. But I would also say, thirdly, that, you know, we have people sitting at the table that don't want to cut anything, but that advocated for a negative 2% across-the-board cut to the town council. Where are we getting this money?
Well, you don't.
All right.
I can answer that question.
That's why I'm going to have the floor.
I can answer the question, too.
But I've been stopped from talking every time I've tried to answer.
Mrs. Avinzado has the floor. If you're finished, Mrs. Avinzado, I'm going to call Mr. Welch.
Okay, it wasn't a question, it was a comment. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
Yes, as the person that asked for this to be on the agenda, one of the things that troubles me is that this should have been completed with the budget process. We gave a dollar amount, we should have, that's the end of it. The problem with municipal and state and federal budgets is the people who are in charge of spending the money overspend the budget, and we get into a situation where we don't have extra money. So I'm going to make a motion that.
It's a report.
Say again?
This is just a report. There's no motions. Uh, for action. No action.
I'm going to ask for a consensus opinion of this committee, that at the next meeting, we have a finite report as to how the budget is going to be met as required for the athletic department. Now, this is no reflection on you, sir. This is, we have a job to do, we have a budget to live within. The athletic department was supposed to shave $30,000 off of its budget. I expect to see $30,000 shaved off the budget. We're five months into the budget year, so I would ask the committee to please go along with me, that the next meeting, we will have provided to us a finite report from administration detailing the $30,000 cut from the budget. Thank you.
If I can just respond to Mr. Welch.
I think he deserves to explain himself.
This presentation tonight is not out to say that we're not going to do this. You know, we have a budget and we're going to live within it. But we are letting you know that the move that this committee made back in the spring was against the superintendent's and Mr. Marcello's recommendation.
Good point.
And, and so, you know, Mr. Marcello was having a little hard time, and myself as well, in trying to figure this out. But what we're telling you is that our best plan right now, and what we intend on doing, is to have, is to use transportation as a means to save this money, and that will be done more than likely in the spring. We are looking at this number, and as Mr. Marcello already talked about, he has found that we can, through other savings that he's been able to find, we've already been able to account for above 15 of that $30,000. So the remaining $15,000, we're planning on doing with nearby transportation, or to some extent, with transportation. That's the short answer of it. If you want more details on that, I can provide those for you at the next meeting.
All right, so we will have that before us in the next meeting. So I think what Dr. O'Shea was saying is that when this came up on the budget, because I've just overheard some, was that the recommendation was to cut the sports, and that was what the superintendent recommended, and the school committee went back and said, no, they didn't like that recommendation, make a new recommendation. And so I think that's why he's saying this was not the recommendation that was initially made, that we took the secondary recommendation from, we asked for a different recommendation Mr. Marcello and Dr. O'Shea had given. So we have this report in front of us, we've all asked our questions, we can talk about this again if, but I will say personally, having driven my son to numerous athletic things in middle school, that while it is not the thing that I like the most, I have no problem with doing that, if this is what we need to do to save money. And it would just be making sure that legally we find, because we transport kids to things all the time, as Mrs. Avinzado said, for, not only for non-athletic activities, but so. So we now come to.
Madam President.
You know, this is a report, we all had our say.
Before we move on.
And it is now almost nine o'clock.
One question.
And we are coming to, we still have not gone over, we have people in the audience, I would ask that the committee move to the consent agenda. So, thank you, Mr. Marcello.
Thank you.
Mr. Marcello, before you sit down.
No, I'm, we're excusing Mr. We're excusing Mr. Marcello.
And due respect to you.
No.
Mr. Marcello.
No, we're moving on.
Did what he was charged to do.
Thank you. Okay, routine business items.
Didn't take any consideration of the suggestion.
Mrs. Benson, you don't have the floor. You have not been recognized. We're now moving on to executive session, if there's any disclosure of votes from our prior meeting.
Nothing tonight.
We're moving into consent agenda. Is there anything that people would like to exempt from the consent agenda?
I will say, I had talked to Dr. O'Shea earlier today, and we're exempting the assistant hockey coach at this time. And obviously, from our discussion on the floor, while we can approve Mr. Barrett for the head basketball coach, not at $32,000, so while, we can approve it and have that number.
We'll see if we can get less.
As to what it is supposed to be. So those are my two exemptions, other things. Mr. and Mrs. Benson, what would you like to exempt?
Point of order.
Yes, Mr. Mudge, what is your point of order?
I think you called.
I have a point of.
She called on me, Mr. Mudge.
I have to recognize a point of order. What is your point of order?
Your point of order is out of order, because she had recognized me.
Okay, I'll have my point of order after she recognizes you.
Mrs. Benson, what would you like to exempt?
No, I would like to complete what I said about renegotiating and asking.
We've heard that Ned has been commented on, so we're moving on.
But you didn't give any solution to it.
Do you have an exemption? No, it was a report. Mr. Dr. O'Shea will get back to us.
And go forward with them and expect, and ask for those things to be done.
And Dr. O'Shea can get back to us. That was where we came from, so.
Well, you didn't state that.
All right, Mr. Mudge, what is your point of order?
Miss Madam Chairman, you mentioned something about something being taken off the budget or off the agenda tonight. What was that item that's coming off the agenda?
I said, we are, at this point, we are exempting the assistant hockey coach.
What item is that, please?
It is under E1.
E1.
So it's a four, E1.
Mm-hmm. Look on your list, do you see hockey coach?
Anything you would like to exempt, Mr. Mudge?
My point was, you said you weren't going to discuss that tonight. My point of order is, we are going to discuss it tonight. I mean, we just don't take something off the agenda because you talked to the superintendent, it's coming off the agenda. Once it's on the agenda, we should talk about it, and there should be an explanation why we're taking it off the agenda, and everyone should vote on that.
You are correct, we should be tabling that issue.
Thank you.
So I would ask the committee to table that until the next committee meeting.
So moved.
Second, what I meant to, can I speak on that motion?
Yes.
Maybe I'm wrong about Robert's rules, but I believe that it is appropriate for the superintendent and the chair to remove something from the agenda prior to the meeting. I believe that's allowed under the rules, and I'd ask that we check into that and have an answer.
I agree with that.
Madam Sheehan, if I may.
I agree with you.
Yes, Mrs. Carroll.
The only personnel item can only be acted on upon the recommendation of the superintendent. It's his recommendation. If he chooses tonight not to recommend an appointment, that's automatically off the agenda, because he's not recommending it.
All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so then can we withdraw the motion that has been made?
Sure, withdrawn.
I'll draw my second.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Benson, what would you like to exempt from the consent agenda?
Number H1.
There is.
Yeah.
That's, that is being tabled for this evening, too, but that is not under the consent agenda.
That being tabled?
Yes, basically, I will tell you why H is being tabled. The superintendent is speaking to the Sandy Blankenship, the head of the, the president of the union, and so the superintendent has asked us to table that item.
Thank you.
That's very good. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. O'Shea.
So now going back to the consent agenda, are there things on the consent agenda? Mr. Thompson.
E1.
You want all of them?
Yep. E2, please.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
So we have that.
That brings us to E1.
I'd like to ask if we could put this off, and in the intervening time. I'd like to ask if we could put this off, and in the intervening time, if, if the superintendent and the business manager or whoever is the appropriate could, could find out about taking a ten percent reduction on these figures and bringing it back to us at the next meeting, if that's acceptable, that would be my suggestion.
Is it a suggestion or a motion?
Well, all right. I would move that, that we put the E1 off and that the appropriate people attempt to reduce this cost by ten percent. I don't know what that figure would be, I haven't had a chance to add them all up, but it might help us somewhat get towards what we're trying to get to here.
I'll second that motion.
All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Dr. Oje.
With all, with all due respect, I would recommend against this measure, simply because, you know, there are so many areas in our budget where, you know, we could be asking people to save money. To say, single-handedly, it is simply the coaches of these particular sports, or just coaches, period, that would take a ten percent reduction. First of all, we need the coaches, we need them now. Second of all, there are so many areas where we could ask people and, and supply lines and all kinds of different places where we could say, let's take a ten percent reduction. Why just sports? Thirdly, obviously, this is not something that we can do single-handedly. It would, it would require cooperation and an MOA from the teachers' union because it is part of the contract. Quite frankly, I just do not see that happening. This was negotiated in good faith, and, and I just see it as pretty much a waste of time in the short term. I mean, in the long term, we can certainly negotiate these ideas and try to make something work for the long term. In the short term, I just don't see us going down the road of changing a salary scale in the middle of a contract, you know, so.
Doctor, I mean, Mr. Marcelo.
Just as a follow-up there to what Dr. Oje just mentioned, there is a sense of urgency here in that one of these teams, the ice hockey team, their season begins November 17th, and every other winter team begins November 28th. My point is, if, if these coaches are not approved, there can't be any tryouts, they can't be on the court, they can't be on the ice unless they're-
And all of these salaries are within budget.
Yeah. May I comment on, may I comment on Mr. Marcelo's point?
I will recognize you, Mr. Mudge, and then you may comment.
Both with Dr. Oje and Mr. Marcelo. And I totally agree with you, okay, because I've been the stickler on that, because what we have done before is we have hired the coaches after the season starts, and I think that's wrong, okay, and we shouldn't do that. They should be hired before the season starts, essentially at least a month, in my opinion. But nonetheless, okay, we're at that point, and I think we were obligated to go, and we should not have an unpaid coach. It starts off the season.
This, this process, to get all this in order, it started a long time ago-
I understand.
-between myself and Mrs. Gardner down in human resources, so.
But I recognize, I recognize your effort you put into that, and I applaud you for getting these in before the season starts, okay, which you need to do. So, thank you.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Yes, Mrs. Avanzado.
I just think ten percent is a tremendous reduction that you're asking for, and we don't have any information back that we asked for, and I'd be interested to know, did these stipends increase at all? Has there been an increase? Or are they at zero where they've been the year before? I don't know. I think we need a little more information, that's how I feel about it. Ten percent off the top without any information from the administration, I can't support doing that.
Mr. Welch? Oh, I thought I saw you, you're panned up. Sorry.
You saw my hand.
Sorry.
I second the motion for ten percent, but I only second it to bring about a meaningful discussion, because you can shoot me, but don't shoot the message, because the message is good for our financial health. And when I first spoke, I'm glad you brought that up, when I first spoke, I spoke about, let's re-get in for a new renegotiation, and I was told there was one year on the contract. So that is something that we can look forward to because it has been gotten before. So, shoot me, but not the message. The message is for the benefit of the students and the school system.
All right, let's take a roll call vote. Lorraine?
Linda Avanzado. No.
Yes.
Mel void Benson.
I, I didn't get a chance to withdraw my second and ask for a withdrawal of the motion, the ten percent.
All right, so you're withdrawing your second.
My second.
All right, so-
And I told you in my speech that I only second it for a discussion.
Well, then you should have also told us, not to, you're withdrawing the second.
That's right. I'm withdrawing it because you're calling for a motion on the vote. You're calling for a roll call on the vote.
All right, so you withdraw your second, so there is no vote, no motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so now there's a second.
I'll second it, second it, and I would like to amend the motion.
You can't make the motion and second it too.
No, you either second the motion and we vote on it, or you don't second the motion.
But I can't amend it, but I can't amend the motion?
Amend the motion before you second it.
What are you, what are you seconding, Mr. Mudge?
Well, I was suggesting, I'd like to amend the motion to say that we could, we don't do it this year, but look into it for next year. Okay, because Mr. Thompson's got, maybe we can negotiate something for next year, but I think it's too late this year.
So why don't you just approve the appointments and ask the superintendent to look into a reduction for next year?
We can hear you on this one, Ms. Carroll.
Why don't you just-
Well, that's fine.
Make a motion to approve the appointments this evening and ask the superintendent to look into a reduction for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. That's fine.
All right, so we've had a second withdrawn from the motion, there is no longer a motion on the floor. Is there a motion to approve E1?
I withdraw my, I'm withdrawing my motion.
No, you didn't make the motion, Mr. Thompson made the motion.
All right, I'll withdraw. The second.
I have already stated that. So, is there a motion to accept E1?
Yes, I'll make the motion to accept it.
Second. Okay, all those in favor of approving E1, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Thank you. E2?
I would ask that the superintendent look to us trying to do something for next year if he could.
All right, thank you very much. E2?
E2 is, just one question. This is a seven-hour-a-day job, okay, I don't know that the people, it's not, they're mature, thirty-five hours a week. Is this with benefits? And if so, because I didn't see it in the back here, is this like with sick time and things like that? And is it full benefits or half benefits or?
Full benefits.
So, you work thirty-five hours a week, you get full benefits?
Yeah, that's the clerk.
All of our clerks work thirty-five hours a week.
That's the ESP stipulations in the contract.
And that state law, isn't it thirty?
You don't have a forty-hour-a-week job, okay? I, for some reason, thought that full benefits meant a forty-hour-a-week job.
Thank you. The state rule is thirty.
All right, do I have a motion to approve E2?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, so we've throughed the consent agenda, can we bring up the RFP? We won't be voting on the school bus contract in this part of the Oje session, because that's what we have to discuss in executive session at nine-thirty, and then we will go into open session after that, so.
There is.
So that's why I've been trying to remind the committee that we are going into executive session at nine-thirty, as it says on your agenda. So, I would ask if the committee could bring up, we earlier had the athletic advertising RFP, if we could bring that up at this time. Do I have a motion to bring that forward in the agenda?
I'll make a motion to bring it forward.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we are bringing the athletic advertising RFP up to this part of the agenda. Dr. Oje.
This, this RFP that you have in front of you is much broader and much more wide-open to a lot of possibilities than what we were originally looking at. When Mr. Marcelo first approached us about this idea, it was for banners only, which was a pretty, you know, compared to what you have in front of you, was only maybe a small portion of this. This leaves a lot of possibilities open. It can be an item where a company could talk to us about being a sole provider of a major advertising campaign that could take in banners and a whole lot more around the school. It could also be a number of different companies that would talk to us about having advertising. One thing that it does do is it gives us complete control over where, what the message is, if there's ever a company that is doing advertising and we don't like it for any reason at all, because we think it just doesn't even look pretty, or because we're against the message of the ad for any reason, we can pull the plug on those items. But this allows us to kind of dream big. If a particular company wants to come in and, and every time a person travels on our basketball court, an insurance company wants to sponsor that, oh, we'll be happy to do that too. But, you know, there are, there are lots of options here, and, and, you know, far be it from me to say how much it would include. It could certainly include banners and that sort of thing, and our gymnasium, and our football field, and other places in our building, but it could include a lot more than that as well, and could, you know, really help us to alleviate some of the discussion we had earlier about how we're going to support athletics and a number of other programs that we have in our schools. So, this could be, has the potential to be a big moneymaker.
Mrs. Avanzado.
Just a couple of quick things. I think in terms of the RFP itself and the idea, this is definitely moving in the right direction, and I think this is a very good idea and something that we absolutely have to explore. In terms of Mr. Marble's comments earlier and the boosters' involvement, I think it's pretty important to have them involved in this process because they're such a huge element of raising money for athletics. And I like the idea also of doing a comprehensive look at this and talking about getting in touch with like Sony with the music program, that's a great idea. I, not that I don't want to pass this, I just think that it would be good, and I don't want to stall it too much either, because I think if we wait too long and we get a big committee and it, and it could bog down. But I would recommend that the boosters be involved in this process, and that we also look at drama and at music, those other things as well. As I said, I don't really want to bog us down, but on the same token, I think it needs to be done in conjunction with our boosters. And then the last thing I would say is, in terms of pay, pay for play, I think it's inevitable that the Rhode Island legislature needs to re-
Redo that.
Take that away. It's just going to be, it's inevitable, it's not something that anybody wants to do, it's something that we're probably going to have to do. We certainly don't want to be, have our hands tied and be unable to raise the funds we need to fund these programs. These are really critical to our students, athletics and extracurricular, we got to find a way to try and provide them. So that would be my comment.
Dr. Oje.
To, to address what Mrs. Avanzado just said, I think that this is a really good place to start. It gives us a lot of leeway, and it gives us, you know, there's nothing to stop the boosters and other organizations from weighing in on this and seeing what we get for proposals and helping us to make that decision. And it doesn't stop us either from, from then doing similar kinds of things. See how this goes and see, okay, can we do similar kinds of things for the arts and for music and that sort of thing? And I think this is a really good place to start.
I, I see hands. I want to add something to the conversation. This morning, Dave Marble and I exchanged emails in, in talking about this RFP, and one of the things that he asked me was if a company could put a bid in, that they would get the vendors for us with taking a small percentage for themselves if, if our RFP enabled us to do that. So, prior to the meeting, I showed the email to Mr. Draper and specifically asked him if that was something that was included in our RFP, and he stated that we could add that paragraph in there. Am I correct, Mr. Draper?
Yes.
So, that is one thing that I would put on the table, that would take a motion to be able to do that, but, and I'm not making that motion right now, but I'm adding that to the discussion. So, Mrs., Mr. Thompson and Mrs. Benson.
I had two concerns, and I expressed these before. One is the thing about, the way I'm seeing this is that this is strictly an athletic program, and it's going to be conducted and run and managed and controlled by the athletic department. And I, I disagree with that, I don't think it's a good concept. I think in the past, we've had major problems in the school department with contracts and athletics and et cetera. And I've suggested in the past that this contract be led out by the business department and conducted by the business department. That's point one. Point two is that you keep talking about the athletics, that we're going to put signs in the gym, we're going to put a sign up on the athletic field, et cetera, et cetera. These are the property of the North Kingstown School Department, and I want you to be just completely aware of the fact that all these other clubs that are part of the North Kingstown School Department, just because the German club doesn't happen to go out and meet on the athletic field, does not mean that they're just as worthy of support as the soccer teams and the hockey teams and all the rest of these teams. So I would strongly recommend that, number one, we, we put this thing over into the business department where it belongs and where we have good background and experience in, in doing this kind of thing. And number two, I suggest that we open this thing up, and we'll have to talk about it, but open it up to any and all groups, this thing that we're talking about here. What I'm hearing at the table is, I'm hearing you say, oh, well, this is going to go all to athletics, but then in the future, we'll go out and do something else for the theater, and we'll do something else for the German club. I, I don't-
I want to clarify.
Okay, please do.
Okay. First of all, this RFP was organized by Mr. Draper, the whole program is run out of the business department, so I can assure you of that. Secondly, it is completely up to this board on how that money is used. So if, I mean, obviously, the charge of this committee has been to come back with an RFP related, you know, starting with athletics, but that doesn't mean the money has to just go to athletics here. So, we can, we can use this, it could be athletics-related advertising, that affects all kinds of programs in our school. We could do a complete across-the-board extracurricular activities, not only for this school, but in other places in the district as well. So there's no decision here, there's nothing to suggest in this RFP that, obviously, it's an RFP, the, the companies that are bidding for this work have no say at all about where that money goes once it gets here. We decide that later on. So, I'm not against that at all. What I meant by my comment was that there may be other areas, once we see how this goes, to say, okay, let's also have an RFP that is arts-related. So now we can look at, at organizations who want to do an advertising campaign around the arts at North Kingstown High School, or the music program at North Kingstown High School. But this, this first attempt starts with, obviously, athletics-related advertising.
Mrs. Benson and Mr. Welch.
I was going to say that we asked the gentleman to remain until we get to this section, and what was said is what he said in his beginning when we asked him to wait.
Mr. Marble, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
But you can't do that, you can't get an advertisement- Can't hear you, I'm sorry. You can't, you can't get an advertisement under an athletic contract, and that, an RFP that goes out from athletic contract, and then apply some of the funds to music. Adidas isn't going to be very happy about that. So, even if it's stipulated at the highest level, that's, that's not a-
Too many, too many problems.
And the other thing is, from, I absolutely agree that this should be not, irrespective, but not lumped on Jim's lap to manage, because there's, there's a lot of stuff to this. If you're targeting local businesses versus national businesses, the, the amount of money that you're going to charge for a three-by-five sign or a ten-by-twelve sign, how much is that going, what's it going to look like? Who's going to manage all that? And the reason I brought up the idea of going to a company that specializes in these kinds of things is because then you'd have one contract, and you'd have one person-
This, this RFP allows for that to happen.
Yeah, and, and, and that should be managed at an independent level, independent of athletic, it should be an extracurricular activity funding mechanism.
Well, and, and it can be that, the, this school committee has asked us to put together something that is- The, this school committee has asked us to put together something that is athletics-based. This started with an idea from Mr. Marcello. That doesn't mean that revenue taken in from an advertising campaign, if that advertising campaign happens to be athletics-connected, half, all the money has to remain only in the athletics program. Doesn't mean that. It, it can mean whatever the school committee ultimately wants it to mean once this campaign is, is going on.
I realize, but I just want, I want, want to be clear that that might be your intent, but the person who's paying the check on the other side, the advertiser, might not agree with that stipulation.
Well, if it's in the-
You may be blocking, you may be blocking a whole-
Whatever the rules are of the RFP is, is what matters. So if, if the advertiser is getting their advertising out at athletic events, they're getting what they want. What the school, school department ultimately does with that money, it may be in the proposal of the RFP, say Nike says, we want our logos on your uniforms and we're going to, and we're going to connect what we're doing to your uniforms. Then, that's part of the RFP, that's what we have to do. But if Nike just says, we're going to give you $10,000 to put all kinds of Nike ads all over your gymnasium, and you can do whatever the heck you want with the money, then we can do whatever the heck we want with the money.
That's all I'm saying.
Right.
Two different stipulations.
Right. But either way, this RFP allows for either of those ideas. This, this gives us a lot of leeway to take in whatever a bidder may have in mind and let us decide from there. That, that's exactly what the committee has asked us to do before. Before, we said just banners, and we were talking about just certain kinds of, of companies, and people started to think up here about, jeez, we could do a heck of a lot more than that, why don't we go broader? And, and so that tries to address that particular need.
All right, I see hands. The order that I have in right now is Mr. Welch, Mr. Mudge, Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Avanzato. Mr. Welch.
Yes. I thoroughly agree with the, with the approach that Mr. Marcello brought to us. And not wanting to be overly optimistic and counting my chickens before we have eggs, I'm also concerned, as with Mr. Thompson, about the, the statement in the, in the information that we have, which says, due to public interest in the attendance at athletic events in the district believes that income may be derived through tasteful and professional presentation of advertising in exchange for revenue. I am not willing to commit at all to anything being locked up into any activity other than activities, period. So if, if this was defined and confined to athletics, I would be voting against it.
Mr. Mudge.
First, I, I think this should, we should be ta, this thing should be tabled because there are many other issues that have to be looked at. I think we should send this to the Department of Education and ask them for the review and comments on this as we have done on other issues. Are we violating any rules and regs from the Department of Ed standpoint? Second, I believe that, that, I don't know who the "we" is when we say, we may not like a banner or this and that. Is it the school committee? Is it the coach of the football team or baseball team? Is it a parent? Is it Bill Muncher? Is it the school committee? Say somebody puts a banner up that offensive to somebody.
I'll clarify, it's the superintendent.
Superintendent, a superintendent would be, well, I, I might disagree with that, but, so that's one of my concerns, okay? Is that, now, who controls this? And part of the whole policy is to look at this thing. And also, I think we have to look at our current policy, working with the Boosters Club and other activities and fundraisers and the money coming in from the fundraisers. I don't think that's clear at all, and I don't think we have a policy that covers it. So we, we, we kind of got, again, the cart ahead of the course, okay? Mr. Thompson, okay? In terms of trying to do something, and we don't really know all the ramifications of what we're going to do, what the policies are, how are we going to spend the money, who's going to be in charge, okay? And I think we need to vet that before we do that. And also, I would hate to see an effort like this be kind of productive to the local people that are trying to help us raise money and take money away from the, the Boosters Club or any other clubs that are raising money, whether it's gymnastics team or everything else. I mean, the well's going to run dry, okay? And, and what are the percentages going to be that we take in? Should we have a Boosters Club run this whole thing for us? And where all the money goes into the pot? So there's just too many things that need to be evaluated before we go forward with this thing. But primarily, I think we should start with sending this to the Department of Education and asking them for their, their blessing that this is, does not violate any of the Department of Ed regulations. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson.
I'd like to see us talk this over very, very carefully with you and with all of us. I know we have a budget subcommittee on the 21st at 10 o'clock, and if we don't talk about it before then, I think we should certainly talk about it at that time. I'm, secondly, I'm very positive about this whole concept. I don't want to give the impression I'm not. In fact, when Mr. Mudge is talking about, are we going to the well too often, or are we putting the cart before the horse, or whatever he's talking about? You know, I, I'm always talking about those four pockets, and these kids go around into this town and they knock on doors all the time, and they're going to the homeowners. And I think this would not be going to that same well. I can see an opportunity for, for a Xerox or, you know, even a non-sports corporation to, to be very interested in putting advertising into our schools, and not just here in the high school, but any of the schools out here, as long as we have the control over what it is and who, and what they're saying. I agree that we should get some kind of a preliminary finding from the Department of Education because, you know, who knows? They might, they may not want us to do this, and so we shouldn't go too far down the road until we at least conceptually present this thing to them and let them give us an idea. And then finally, the, the few places in here where I've been circling the words athletics, you know, I, I can see where we could go through this, take those words out, and we could do the same thing that we're trying to do. And finally, I, I would like to have it very specifically stated in here, and I don't see it yet, that we, it's our option what to do with this money. I disagree with you, sir, that I think Adidas is going to be very happy to have their signs and their logos or whatever they want to do out on the athletic fields and to be seen by all those people. I don't think they could care less what we do with the money that they give us. That's up to us to, to do it with.
Just to be clear, I was talking about targeted. It's like, like, you want some of that, I have some of that. I wasn't talking about-
Well, then, if that's the case, then we should have it specified in here that we are not, that that's not going to be a part of this deal. And if they don't agree with that, then Adidas doesn't have to bid on it. We'll get a bid from somebody else who's willing to let us spend this money in any way we see fit. Thank you.
Dr. Ojai. And then I have Mrs. Avanzato, Mrs. Benson, and myself.
I just want to respond to a couple of things. First of all, I, I don't understand what the Department of Ed has to do with this at all. We advertise in our school as we, as it is. We advertise in our district as it is. This is nothing new.
Thank you.
Okay? Also, and, and if we need to talk about this in budget subcommittee, I'm fine with that. I just feel like we table things to death, and, and we're, we have this sense of urgency about the need to bring revenue into this district. And I hope the sense of urgency is around this table tonight, that we have a wide-open RFP. All we're asking people to do is submit bids. We can determine when we get that bid, if it is acceptable to us, and what parts of the bid are acceptable and what parts are not. And we can come back and say, you know, we don't like this piece. And, and we can sort out all of those details. Who oversees this? The business department oversees it. Who makes the final decision as to what is appropriate and what is not? The superintendent. That is nothing new. That is the case with so many things that take place in our school district. So this is not, you know, the Wild West, this is not a whole brave new world that we're looking into here. It is a routine contract that gives us the potential for a lot of revenue, and it doesn't commit us to anything right now. It just asks that we get some ideas coming in so we can make some decisions in a couple of months from now when we get these ideas. And, and we have a lot of people looking at this. We're going to make some good decisions, and hopefully, we're going to bring in a lot of revenue for our school district, which we desperately need.
Mrs. Avanzato.
I think this RFP is very broad and very well-written for what we're trying to do, having looked at it pretty closely. And a lot of the concerns that have been voiced are already addressed in this, if you look at it. School committee reserves the right to accept or reject without prejudice any and all proposals or to waive any irregularities therein and accept any bid deemed to be in the best interest of the school department. This includes any advertising that may be found objectionable by the North Kingstown School Department or the school committee. So we retain all rights, it looks like to me, in this. The only thing that I would say is, the sentence that Mr. Welch drew our attention to on the front under background that says, due to the public interest in attendance at athletic events, I don't know whether the superintendent's willing to do this at this point, but you could say athletic and other events and open it up right now to everyone. I don't know. But that would be my only point. The other thing I want to-
I'd be amenable to that.
I want to comment on something that Mr. Thompson said and also that Mr. Marble said as well. I like to see this managed primarily by the business office, just because I think that's where contracts belong. My concern in having a middleman company, like you referenced earlier, Kim, is that at times, those companies take a large percentage. And I know during our audit, we found that there was like 19% being taken of certain monies given by parents for fundraising to a marketing company, and I don't want to see that happen, although I suppose, again, it would be up to us. We could look at the different companies and see what the percentages were and make sure that it was, you know, a fair percentage for the, going right to this sports. But I would support, I support this, and I don't think we should. I realize we asked for this, and you really delivered what we asked for, pretty much. So-
I, I'm amenable to making the change for athletic and other extracurricular activities. I'd also like to say that if an RFP should come in that is kind of a middleman RFP, we have every right to look at that.
Sure.
And, and if it looks good to us and it seems to make sense, depending on the terms that the bid puts forth, we can accept it. If we say, we don't like 50% of the revenue going away, then we don't accept that one, you know?
And one last quick point. I don't think it says in here at all anything about where the money goes. It's not in here. That's always up to us, the school committee, by law, and it's, and this contract is not in contravention of that, so that's all.
I'm going to say something. I know everybody else has spoken, so I see your hands. I'm going to take my time.
I mean-
So, one, I, we asked for this, this RFP, and now it's been given to us. We asked for it for athletics because we are cutting $30,000 from the budget. We are now in November. If we continue to put this off, we lose more of the athletic season, and we're coming into the winter sports. We have policy that talks about RFPs, so we're okay there. The superintendent approves what's done here. It does, it doesn't need approval for RIB. We do approve all contracts. So as Dr. Ojai said, if we don't see, if it would be an outside company, again, if we think it's too big of a percentage, we just don't approve it. We are behind right now. I've been to Bishop Hendrickson, which has a big sign on their scoreboard that it says that it's the, brought to you by Dunkin' Donuts, and I think it's Gentech.
Catholic school.
So, you know, it's the sort of thing of, other schools are out there getting the revenue from that, and the longer we wait, the more we don't. So it's a sort of thing of, right now, I would say, we do start with athletics. We can come in, in meetings from now, and do the next step for musicals and that sort of thing. We're going to miss the musical next weekend. So it, it's the sort of thing of, we're not going to be able to get anything, and they do advertising in their bulletins that's already gone. All those students have already gotten out and gotten people for their play bill. So, you know, that's not something that we monitor right now anyway. You know, it's, we don't have a motion on the floor for this, so, you know, I will be looking to see if the committee is going to table this for agenda or if they could even, must approve this, but that's what I have to say. So now, we have two more people, and then we'll go on. Mrs. Benson and Mr. Thompson.
First, I want to thank you, Dr. Ojai, for bringing out the point that we table everything, because it's getting to be a nine-course dinner. And to the gentleman that we asked to remain, it was your idea originally that we include the other organizations. We asked him to remain so we could hear his plans, and I'm sure he's heard enough talking, but I think you deserve to say where you left off, because Madam President said, that comes up again down in the agenda in which you mind waiting. So let's do that, and for the betterment of not putting another dish on the table, maybe we should once, form, ask for volunteers who want to be on the committee and worked with you since you spent your time, and come out and bring it back to the next meeting. Because the meal has to be eaten, because that season has started. Was anything wrong with that, Madam Attorney?
No, I just don't, I didn't understand what committee you were talking about, Mrs. Benson.
The committee to decide how these advertisements were going up. It won't take for two people, a three-
It's Dr. Ojai. Dr. Ojai makes that decision.
It's Dr. Ojai's question.
But Dr. Ojai, I understood him well, but I don't think Dr. Ojai want to make a decision in isolation.
Mr. Thompson. As the superintendent, he makes a lot of decisions in isolation.
I know that, but this is a hard decision.
Mr. Thompson.
I was just about ready to say, okay, and then, Kim, you mentioned that we're going to start with the athletics and then we'll get to the other things later, so now I'm right back to where I was at the beginning. You knocked me right back. I, I heard Dr. Ojai saying this was going to be for everything and everybody, and you're changing what he just said.
There's no motion on the floor, Mr. Thompson, so if you want to make that motion, that's fine.
I'd like to move that, and I'd also like to ask Dr. Ojai if he'd be willing to change under proposal submission and take out James Marcello and his email and put in the business office and put in their email and have this whole thing be run by the business office. That's what I've been asking for all along. It's not there on that, bottom of page three.
Mr. Thompson, we will be happy to do that. Thank you.
Second motion.
Is that, is that your motion, Mr. Thompson?
Before we proceed with the motion, all due courtesy-
The motion is on the floor and a second.
All due courtesy is due to that gentleman.
May I ask, Mrs.-
Do you agree, Miss?
Mr. -clarify what Mrs. Benson, I think.
Yeah, but don't, you have to clarify what Mr. Thompson just made as a motion.
So, Mr. Thompson, your motion was that you were-
I'm, I'm satisfied. Dr. Ojai said he'd be willing to do that, and that's fine with me.
Yes, we need to clarify your motion, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson, you're making a motion to approve this RFP with taking out Mr. Marcello and putting in Mr. Draper.
And taking out the, the references to the athletic department, which have been, which have been made.
And any, and, right, in any reference, right, in any reference to specifically athletic department, because there's a couple in here that need to be edited.
And adding in a caution to the companies who are bidding that we reserve the right to spend this money on any item that we want.
Right, right. That's, that's a given.
But to specify it, not-
And we can change that, as long as, if you want to approve it with those criteria, that's your motion.
Yep. I so move.
And I second.
Okay.
Got that, Laura Reed?
Yes, Mrs. Avanzato.
Just briefly, the, the suggestion that Mrs. Benson made regarding a committee, I would think the larger issue of how you fund athletics and extracurricular activities, aside from advertising, there are other things, too, to discuss, and the boosters need to be a part of that, and they can also, as a part of that, the advertising issues can be discussed as well. I think that's something that needs to happen in this district, because we're going to start looking at other creative ways, and obviously, the boosters have been at the forefront of it, and I would suggest that, you know, if they're interested, I don't know, that they may want to do something like that where they can give feedback.
Last point, and I'll let you, I'll let you go.
With his motion, it's all the gate-
That's actually the main reason I came up to speak in the first place, is that I think this is a larger issue and that we really need to do, have, whether it's a committee or whatever. By the, we have some wonderful marketing executives that live in this town-
Exactly.
-that have amazing expertise in these areas that we could just put together and help work on issues like this. So my recommendation would be to do exactly what Dr. Ojai said, is pass this, get it going, get our feet wet, but do exactly what Mrs. Avanzato said as well, and then have a committee that can get together and look at the more strategic level, hybrid, private-public funding of athletics and extracurricular activities. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Thompson, if he would withdraw his motion.
You may ask, but he's made a motion on the floor and seconded.
Don't you think that's the, that's the goods going to, or you load them on the freight truck?
No, I think it's a good motion.
Well, I'd like to see that, that the, if you go amendment, spring it back.
It may be recognized.
It's going to be recognized.
Yes, well, two things. One is, I'd like to see the thing rewritten and come back to us, okay? Fine, because I think what Mr. Thompson said, you know, kind of makes some sense, although I wouldn't just discount the fact that, unless our lawyer says it is no, it's no violation of, you know, State, you know, Department of Ed regs or any other regs.
For advertising? You advertise in yearbooks, you advertise in newspapers?
I know, I get it. All I'm saying, you want to give us a legal opinion, fine, that's fine, okay? Is, I just want to make sure, because there have been some issues in some other schools around the country. And by the way, when you speak of activities-
Can we move the questions, please?
There's a difference between an activity like a play, by the way, a play, and a football team, and something else. There are individual accounts for like, if you're running a play, or photo, photography, if you look at the Department of Education's manual, which I don't have, it specifically says you will have accounts for each of these different activities. And the fundraising for those activities are, they raise the money, okay, they spend it to where they want, so you can't blur the two. And I will bring that, I will bring that, and I'll send copies to everybody else. It's very specific, okay?
All right.
So this is a general thing, which is good, okay? But be careful about saying you're going to earmark this activity or this activity, because I don't think you can do that.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor and a second. Laurine, can we have a roll call vote, please?
We read the motion, please.
This is to approve the athletic advertising RFP, removing references to the athletic department and/or James Marcello, and replace with references to business office, and adding the caution that the North Kingstown School Department reserves the right to the decision as to where the money is spent. Is that your motion, Mr. Thompson? That was your motion?
That's it?
Okay, no, with Benson. Mrs. Benson, your call.
Second.
Yes or no?
No, with a clarification, and I don't care if it's 2:00 in the morning. This gentleman brought something to this school committee, and we have completely talked around it, ignored it, and everything. And he was the first one brought to the table that we include the other things. And I just got a note saying you like it, so tell me if I'm going to hit the lottery. What is it for him to do with all the discussion? And I'm going to finish. I think we've been very disrespectful to your idea when you gave us the original idea. Very congenial, your idea was. And then we make a motion to throw it into the business department, and this, that, and the other.
Okay, Mrs. Benson.
Where is this gentleman and the people that he lead going to have a part in it?
Mrs. Benson, I, we, we have your, your registered vote. Thank you, Laurine.
You're not going to shut me up. We need all the support we have from the community.
It's simply a yes or no, and you have registered your no, so, Laurine.
Bill Mudge, Bill Mudge.
No with an explanation as-
Thank you, Mrs. Benson.
It wasn't valid, and I expect to read it in the minutes. Don't I carry it to the ethics commission?
Mr. Mudge.
Some commission, the civil rights, or whatever it takes.
I'm going to vote yes on the stipulation that we're going to get a committee to look at this and try to bring this together as a follow-up, okay? Before this is ever authorized, okay?
Mr. Mudge, this is simply a yes or no vote on the motion, folks. That's it.
But it's based on that, it's based on that condition, okay? And that condition better occur.
Are you working for the entire school committee? I'm just the chair.
Yes.
Richard Welch.
Yes.
Linda Avenzado.
Yes.
Motion passes, five to one.
That's what I said yes to. All right, we now have an executive session.
Would you please read back my stipulation?
Motion to executive session.
No, we're not going there.
Second.
Okay. Motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
All right, we will now go into executive session.
Please record the no votes.
She has.
I will check with her, see if she's got mine, because otherwise, I'm putting stop for it.
Do they just do it on their own?